Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council Work Session. I would like to welcome any and all guests that we have, both in the chambers and outside. And we'll move right into the first discussion item, which is the Land Use Code Update Discussion Regarding ADU Parking and Travel Home Park Pad Site Servicing. Mr. Jace Huckwalke, please.
Yeah, good morning, Council. I've got my screen shared, but really, everything I'm going to discuss is hopefully well articulated within the staff report. As you may recall, back in September, we had a special work session, and we really did a deep dive in some of the code updates that we're moving forward with here shortly. And what we're looking at, or what we had discussed to bring back to City Council were really two items. One was specific to ADU parking requirements, our accessory dwelling unit parking requirements, and then the other was related to pad site servicing requirements for RV parks. So I'm gonna, hopefully this is not showing appropriately. One thing to mention, we also have Jerry Doll, there we go, Jerry Doll on the line here, so part of our consultant team, so if there's any clarifying questions that need to be asked, he can certainly chime in for those. But I'll just go ahead and jump in here. Again, at the last special work session, specific to the code update, a proposal was presented to City Council specific to the allowance of ADUs beyond the redo district. This was supported by City Council based on that discussion, and really based on previous discussions, but there was more discussion to be had about parking specifically. So what I've done here on this slide, again, it's in the staff report, a little difficult to see it, but hopefully Jerry can see this clearly, is provide some alternatives. And really, it starts kind of top-down. The early options are probably the most flexible or most lenient, and the other options are a little bit more strict. One thing to mention, staff did in the last go-round, what we had reflected in the code was that ADUs would not require any off-street parking. So that was the original proposal by staff. And so option one that we show here is no off-street parking spaces shall be required for an ADU. That is the status quo, as we've presented it in the past. What this would help potentially do is, again, it allows for more flexibility, it allows for larger building footprints for ADUs, and it allows for some possible cost savings because an individual wouldn't have to pave a space, or hard surfaces space, or whatever that might look like. So, again, most lenient approach there is option one, and that's what we presented in the past. Option two would be to require an off-street parking space only if an ADU is conveyed separately from the primary dwelling unit. This would only apply to ADUs within the redo district, as ADU conveyance outside the redo district is actually not permitted in terms of separating out that ownership. So that is option two. Option three would be to require a minimum of one off-street parking space for an ADU in zone districts unless on-street parking is available within a hundred feet of the ADU. That hundred feet is, right now, that's a number. If there's more discussion, or if that's the preferred option, we can talk about that number. But really, what that reflects is that there is available nearby on-street parking, and that could accommodate for any off-street.
That hundred feet is from the building itself?
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's an add-on or a separate building?
Correct. Yep, it would be from the building itself, not necessarily the property line. And that's, again, what we're looking at. We can have further discussion if that is one of the alternative chosen, if we want to increase that, if we want it to be from the property line instead of the ADU itself, because we know that ADUs are typically in the back or the rear of properties. But yeah, as presented, it would be from the unit itself. That option really does kind of provide a middle ground, because it does allow for flexibility, but recognizes that, you know, parking is appropriate. Option four would be one off-street parking space is required for an ADU outside of the B1 zone district, and that B1 is really our downtown core zone district where there's already very limited parking. This is actually our current standard now for ADUs that are within, and again, ADUs are allowed only in the redo district at this point in time, and that is the current requirement, is that they are required to have one space. And then lastly, and this was just something brought up, it's not necessarily something that we are proposing from a staff standpoint, but just wanted to bring it up because it was talked about last time. But this last option is to require a minimum of one off-street space for an ADU and prohibit the use of ADUs for short-term rentals. This is, again, something that was brought up, and is the most restrictive proposal, and it would require a lot more discussion about logistics and enforcement in particular. I want to say that we don't have a high volume of short-term rentals in the city of Montrose since about 2% of our housing stock, very limited. If you look at Telluride, it's actually, you know, 90%, and some of these other resort communities, you're well above 80% of the housing stock of short-term rentals. We're below a lot of kind of other-like communities. So I wouldn't think this is an appropriate option, but it's ADUs, as far as housing stock percentage, we continue to keep an eye on. And if they become a problem in terms of short-term rentals occupying a lot of, you know, residential units, it might be something that we could contemplate in the future. But I wanted to bring that up, it was something discussed, but not necessarily a staff proposal today. With that, I will look for any council discussion as to what you all support, or how we should potentially move forward here.
Well, one of the concerns I have, by not requiring some off-street parking or having some control over it, if I'm a next-door neighbor to one of these, and I never can park in front of my home because my neighbor's using all of that, or a visitor can't park in front of my home, I think that's inappropriate to have that expansion going on. And I see that as, in many of our areas, as a concern.
Sure.
So I'm certainly against having it. I kind of like the hundred-foot, because I think that helps contain it.
The one concern I have with the hundred-foot linear is, we currently have a lot of ADUs that they are considering the alley as on-street parking, and that is creating an issue for our public works, for trash collection, for maintenance, et cetera. And is it possible to include language in there that the alleys do not constitute on-street parking?
Absolutely. We could make sure that's an addition. Right now, that's technically not allowed, so that would be an enforcement issue today.
Yeah, it's not allowed, but I'm afraid that if we go with option three and say that within a hundred linear feet, that people are going to start considering that as a viable option, which puts a burden on our enforcement.
Absolutely. No, we could absolutely have language in there that would state no alley parking, making sure that's...
And I do agree with Mr. Glassbell that I do think that an off-street parking unit outside of our B1 zoning is appropriate, because it does put an additional burden on our already existing residencies.
Go ahead, Ed, I'll wait.
My concern with the ADUs in general is the fact that it prohibits the use of ADUs for short-term rentals, with the fact that we have homeless issues around here, we also have fairly high rentals, and for us to allow one of these little buildings in the back of somebody's house, probably for grandmother or something like that, or even an additional rental for their property, I think if we make it allow short-term rentals for this, it's going to make even it more difficult for the residents to find a place to stay. And, you know, as far as the parking requirements, if we don't have short-term rentals and somebody's renting it for a long time, then I agree with Doug here about the off-street parking, based on the fact that, over where I live, there's some short-term rentals, and they park out in the street. Sometimes there's three, four vehicles. Last month, there was three trucks and three trailers that were taking up the parking space in the neighborhood, and it just seemed kind of unfair to the neighbors to have all these vehicles, like, lined up. And I don't know if we even charge a fee for these short-term rentals or anything like that, like we do the hotels or anything. But anyway, that's just my concern, and I'd like to see that last sentence added to whatever we decide for the parking issue.
Are you saying add the no short-term rentals?
What's that?
Are you saying add the no short-term rentals to all conditions?
Yeah, that's what I would think would be the appropriate thing for the community, based on the fact that there isn't a whole lot of places to rent. People are having trouble finding a place, so at least something that's affordable.
I understand your point, Ed, and it's well-taken. However, I think what we're really talking about right now are the parking requirements for ADUs.
Well, I think the use for the ADUs would facilitate the parking issue. If we're using for short-term, I can't see us, like in my neighborhood, having three or four vehicles out in front, because they're used for short-term.
I want to go back to number four. I don't understand why you would not want off-street parking in the B1 district, because it would seem to me in the B1 district, your parking is already tight on the street, it's high demand, and now you're throwing one more need for a parking space out on the street. So to me, that would mean they would have to have off-street parking.
Yeah, I think we're probably headed in the same direction. Within that zone district, within B1, there's really no land off-street that can accommodate parking. This is really almost fully built-out downtown core.
Buildings know the property.
Yeah, where buildings have basically zero-foot setbacks across the board, so that's the struggle with the B1.
Do you have any parking lots, though, that you overnight park permits for the rentals? We've talked about that.
Yep.
Long-term parking permits.
And there are some that exist today, and that's the current, again, that's the current standard today for all ADUs, is that option number four is really status quo, if we were to keep that. And that would be fine. I think the big thing here is expansion of ADUs beyond just the redo district, frankly, from my standpoint. Parking while not requiring off-street parking would, again, allow for more flexibility and a little bit more cost savings. Jurisdictions kind of go both ways on this. They some allow zero parking, or have no parking requirements, others do have off-street parking, and it seems like that might be the direction, and maybe the question is if that is, if option four is the preferred route, discussion about hard surfacing versus paving of that off-street parking space would be my next question.
Yeah, and I'm inclined, excuse me, I'm inclined to stick with the status quo of option four, just because we don't know what the future holds for additional ADUs, and if there is a large expansion of ADUs in the community, there would consequently be a large expansion of on-street parking, which has its own implications, and, you know, living in the old part of town, which we dearly love, you do make some sacrifices for on-street parking, and I don't know how expanding that really would implicate the city. So it's the unknown that I'm concerned about, and we know what the known is, and it has its own issues, and so I would be inclined to personally support sticking with option four.
Great.
I'd kind of weigh in on Ed's point, that since, on option five, it did mention that prohibit the use of ADUs for short-term rentals, I think that that is appropriate conversation. And I have spoken to a number of other city managers, mayors, and council members from all across the state. Most of them have said that they regret letting the door open, because by the time you realize the short-term rental is a problem, it's too big a problem to stop.
You mean by allowing it in the ADUs?
By allowing short-term rentals for ADUs, that is kind of one of those, you know, the gates open, and it's really hard to close it again. So I think a conversation about that is appropriate.
Do we, I'm just asking the question, do we have a consensus? That comment aside, and set that aside for discussion, but on the parking requirements itself, is there a consensus to stay with option four as the status quo?
I do like that. I do like the idea of adding clarifying language that off-street, on-street parking is not constituted by alleys, just making sure that that's clarified, so there's no ambiguity.
Sure. And maybe just to add, maybe to circle back to my last point, whether it's hard-surfaced or paved, is there a preference? I think we would support, from a staff standpoint, hard-surfacing, again, from a cost-saving standpoint. We see that, I think, primarily right now, but we can articulate that in the code, just so it's very clear that hard-surfacing would be appropriate instead of full-blown paving.
Isn't that curled in our standard?
Yeah, we don't have it necessarily stated.
It's not codified.
Yeah, we would prefer to make that clear, or that's what I would prefer moving forward, just so there's no question or confusion on it.
I like that idea.
Yeah, and I think by not doing that, even if they were going there and gravel, you always got the problem with the gravel migration, and is it migrating on the other people's property? So I think that the hard surface would be the route to go.
Great.
Do you wish to have the discussion on...
Yeah, I guess circling back to that, maybe I misheard it initially. Hard-surfacing could constitute as gravel, technically. We could have that an apron would be required to maybe perhaps limit that gravel push.
I could probably go along with the gravel, as long as you have some kind of border around it to contain it.
Okay.
And gives the kids on Halloween something to throw.
And that would be option two, right?
This would still be option four, so what we would state, and we'll reflect this, of course, in the updated red lines, but one off-street parking space would be required for all ADUs, and that parking space could be hard-surfaced and would not necessarily need to be paved. I will also add some clarifying statements about alleyway parking.
Alleyway parking, right.
That's clearly prohibited.
Okay, great.
We don't...
So, go ahead.
We don't actually have any kind of a number stipulating how many people can be in an ADU.
It's dictated by building code, but yeah, technically not. It's going to be based on size, bedroom counts, and other components that are there, but generally speaking, it depends.
Really, the footprint is going to determine the size, and that looks like 700 or 900 square feet?
Yep.
If you get over that, and getting in a multi-bedroom, it's no longer an ADU, so then...
Yeah, one should break that size threshold.
The requirements are codified in our current building code, as far as what is and is not allowed.
Do you guys want to have the discussion on Ed and Dave's point regarding short-term rentals of ADUs?
When I was talking to some of the states, the staff and electeds of Mount Crested Butte, for one example, and Mountain Village, that they had spoken about the, how becoming a short-term rental for an ADU is taking housing stock off the market for their workers, and how it's creating a huge burden, and it's also creating a burden on transportation networks, it's creating a burden on roads, because all of their service staff are having to drive from other communities, because they can't, there are vacant buildings that are designated as ADUs, or as short-term rental ADUs, that are vacant, because they can't, the staff and service staff can't afford to buy or rent housing in a local community. And one of the things that we have promulgated as a community and as council is that desirability of increasing housing stock, and an ADU that is a short-term rental really isn't helping our housing stock, it's just helping our short-term commercial rentals. And as Jace pointed out, currently, we have around 2% of our housing stock is considered short-term rental, which I think is not a horrible number. I mean, we could go up to 10% of our housing stock, and I don't think it would create a huge burden. I'm worried about the cascading effect of having ADUs as short-term rentals, because, like I said, once we open that door, it's really hard to close it again.
Yeah, and we talked about this with the consultant team, too, and that was the thought, is if there's a time to do it, now is the time. I think our approach moving into this was to not go that route again, given the inventory and the stock of current. And then also to Mr. Yulberry's point, short-term rentals do pay all the lodging taxes that are typical of, you know, hotels, so they are required to pay those, so we do get revenue off of those. But yeah, other mountain towns have certainly dealt with this issue. I've seen it, I've talked with a lot of colleagues in other areas. Again, our inventory made us not think it was warranted, but I think it's certainly open for discussion, and something we can absolutely put in, and now would probably be the best time to do it.
You said about 2%. What does that mean in numbers?
Oh...
Two thousand, three thousand, one hundred?
Oh, we're talking...
Fifty?
Yeah, probably 100 or less, or probably less than 200. I might look to Shaney if she knows it off the top of her head. Short-term rental licenses?
No pressure.
About 150.
I think something can be said, too, that if we're allowed short-term rentals in these ADUs, we're competing with our hotels.
So do you want to give Jace some direction?
My feeling is, I would like, as you said at this point, that this is the time to institute the changes to make it long-term viable, and I think this is an appropriate time to add that language of no short-term rentals for ADUs, since we're going to be expanding ADUs into areas of the city where we have not allowed them in the past, and with all the other burden on on-street parking, et cetera, even with an off-street parking spot, I think it's an appropriate time to add that language.
I agree with Mr. Frank. I think...
I agree.
I think it's unanimous.
Okay. Well, that's the direction I was hoping to get, is kind of a final verdict. So again, we'll keep more or less the status quo from a parking standpoint, we'll include some language specific to prohibiting ADUs for the use of short-term rentals, and we can certainly, from an enforcement standpoint, we can certainly enforce that in the sense of having property owner, developer sign an affidavit stating that it will not be used or something. So we'll figure that out, but from a code standpoint, I think we've got clear direction. So thank you.
Does PD have any comment on ADUs?
It would be hard to enforce if we, the, if we talked to, all time of day, if we could get a lot of...
But, okay, I think we're good. Thank you. I'll move on to the next one, and I think this one will actually be, hopefully, a quicker discussion, just because I think we got a little bit of direction last time. But so for this next slide here, and again, I know it's kind of tough to see it, and I think Jerry can see it pretty clearly, and he can chime in with some of the options, but discussion came up about, specifically about kind of internal paving of RV parks, as well as how the pad sites are surfaced. And so we dug into the code, I've looked at some best practices of other communities, and we've really got four options provided here, these are in the staff report as well. Option one would actually be to maintain the status quo. Do not require pad sites to be paved, and leave that option to the owner-developer of how to surface it. Internal streets and dry aisles, this is something I want to be clear on, internal streets and dry aisles are actually required to be paved today. That's in our code, we're not changing that with new code, we're actually not really changing specifics regarding pad site surfacing, but that would be required today. We don't see that a lot in Montrose, because what we've seen really over the course of the last 10 years is expansion upon existing parks that add variances to essentially continue to use hard surfacing for their dry aisles and other components. But any new park that comes in would require to be paved for internal streets, but we don't have surfacing requirements for the pad sites themselves. So option one, maintain status quo. Option two would be to require the pad sites to be hard-surfaced in some capacity, again, it's not clearly defined in our code, so hard surface meaning gravel or some other surfacing components, and again, all internal streets must be paved. This is really the status quo amongst most jurisdictions, so shown on the slide here is actually an RV park. This was by my last approval project when I was in the city of Grand Junction, and this is really the status quo that most jurisdictions have, is all internal streets are paved, and then all pad sites are hard-surfaced with some, you know, hard-surface gravel, whatever it might be. This is the recommended route I would approach. Again, this is what is seen kind of across jurisdictions, it's something I just saw on my way to the housing conference up near Keystone. So this is my overall thought here, and it, again, provides a little bit of cost savings to where they don't have to pave some of those internal pad sites. Option three, a little bit more restrictive here, would require paving of aprons and all entry points for the pad sites themselves, as well as requiring paving of the streets, so basically adding the requirement for aprons to be paved. And then lastly, would be to actually require all streets to be paved, as well as all pad sites to be paved, which is the most restrictive, or probably the most costly for developers as well. So again, number two is what I would recommend, kind of status quo, keeping in mind, a lot of what we've seen in the past here is just expansion on existing parks, but new parks would have to meet that paving requirement for internal streets, so...
In this case, you're talking strictly of travel home parks and not mobile home parks?
Correct. Yep, for mobile home parks, it's the same requirements in the sense of the paving of internal streets as well.
You know, I can support your recommendation. To be perfectly honest with you, and being an RV'er myself, I would prefer option three from a aesthetic standpoint, and from the experience that the RV'er receives, there's just a whole lot of difference, in my opinion. I don't think that the pad underneath the rig needs to be, because it's pretty much hidden anyway, but, you know, I'm not looking at this from an affordable housing standpoint, I'm looking at this more from an amenities standpoint, and what we're offering for tourists who come into town, and the developer's going to make their money in separate prices accordingly. I just think it's a much cleaner-looking facility if we were to go with option three.
Sure.
But knowing that the council may support option two, I'm not going to be vehemently opposed to it.
I like the idea of option three, based on what Dave says. I think that just the aesthetics, it creates a higher-quality experience for our visitors, and I think that that's what we want. We want that desirability, we want it to be the clean lines and a clean parking spot. I agree with you, I think option three, really, I like that one.
However, you're going to have different-sized trailers, RVs coming into there, and how would you determine where paving comes back and gravel starts? Because it would make a difference how long my trailer is, where it's going to be.
Yeah, most of them, that I have experienced, it's fairly standard length, and there may be portions of your, depending on inside, portions of the rear or the front that aren't there, but there is concrete to step out onto, generally a patio, and maybe some grass. But I think generally, it just makes it a cleaner, looks-wise, and cleaner from a keeping the park clean standpoint. You really notice the difference if you're in a park like this, and you're keeping your rig clean while you're there, you notice the difference on something like this versus something that maybe has hard surface, but it's gravel, but they're all spread throughout it and everything, and it is an amenities thing, I'll admit that, there's no question about it. But, as I said early on, I'm not looking at this from an affordable housing standpoint, but from a visitor's standpoint.
I'm trying to recall, remember what the maximum length on travel home?
Well, if you get into the larger units, there'll be as much as 50, some of them are 60 feet in length, yet they wouldn't pave the whole thing on something like that. But I would say generally, probably 30 to 40 feet of it is paved, depending on the particular park, you know, perpendicular to the rig itself.
I'm leaning toward option two, which is making sure that you have gravel, and I would imagine that, I think it was Doug that said something earlier about putting up some kind of a small border that would help to, for example, pulling out on the street to keep the gravel from getting onto the street. street to keep the gravel from getting onto the street, that sort of stuff. And I don't know what.
I've seen that do, and they don't work. They don't keep it in.
Okay. What another possible alternative option is to allow or require paving for a portion of spaces. And that's what you see on this illustration here, is there's four total spaces out of probably 60 that were paved, but having maybe a percentage threshold of some do require paving or at least maybe a 40-foot paving apron or pad per se, and the rest can be hard-surfaced appropriately.
I noticed in state parks that they, their handicap spaces are all paved. You think about it, you know, if I'm getting out of my vehicle, getting in my wheelchair, I've got a problem with gravel.
And that's how Grand Junction's codes are written, and that's the reason for the paving.
Is that the floor there are for ADA?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So the paving, the paving of the apron, option three is also accommodating any ADA requirements that the park might have because it does provide a hard surface for handicapped-accessible individuals into whatever tramway that they're in.
Yeah.
State parks use decomposed granite compacted as a handicap-accessible medium for that. Perhaps maybe the pads could be somewhat required rather than gravel to use that decomposed granite that it packs down pretty good after a while.
The state park I was in last week, all of the ADA units were total concrete. Concrete where the vehicle, the driver is parked, concrete where the vehicle is parked, concrete where the picnic tables are. I mean, the whole area to accommodate walkers and wheelchairs and people with mobility issues.
I think one of the things that we have to consider, we're not talking federal cap grounds or park, we're talking about stuff within the city limits itself. So I think from the standpoint of the paving, I think it is helpful within the city if we have that because it eliminates a lot of gravel and stuff being pulled out that might pull out and get on the streets from tires and stuff. So I think number three does do a pretty good job of covering most of that.
The only question I would have, and I can look at Jerry, too, is how, and Scott's, I don't know if he's got here, to kind of reflect what the common apron length would be and what would be standard. We can look into what.
Yeah, I think I could even give you several examples that I'm familiar with, and I don't know how they determine what the appropriate length is. Another thing I would raise, I think from a health standpoint, the paving of the site as opposed to just hard-surface gravel is better. I'm not a health expert, but it's very easy to clean the concrete off if there's raw sewage spillage, not so much if it's just hard surface with gravel and it seeps into the ground.
Sure.
So those are all things that I think should be considered.
One of the things I was thinking about, too, is I've seen several places where they just had the two tire strip paved areas and everything else is.
Yeah, but that doesn't really solve the problem.
Doesn't solve the point that you just brought up, Jace.
I think a lot of our issue is a valid and relevant point. I think that's something we.
I've never thought about that before, David. I hope that's not personal experience.
I wouldn't want to talk about it right now, but offline.
I think that's a relevant point. I like to think about that from a health and safety standpoint.
Wouldn't they just spray it off the concrete into whatever's next to the concrete? They're not going to like mop it up and ring it into the thing. So either way, it's getting into the ground.
Well, it depends on the park, but some of them actually have drains that go into the ground, you know? It depends on how sophisticated the park is.
Sure. I think just keep in mind any restrictions or new requirements we'll keep adding, not that we're adding them yet. There's a cost to that that will keep anybody building these parks. So if we're, and paved on every, and that's one reason I had brought up the apron idea. It was a compromise between what was discussed last time and going all in. It might be, but too much, we just won't have any of these buildings.
Are you saying yes on option three or no on option three?
Yes, on option three. Paving is a good compromise.
That's where I'm coming from. I wasn't talking about the.
I always, I thought you mentioned if you go all in and do concrete underneath.
No, I'm talking about just, that's option four, and I'm not supporting that, although I've been in parks that do that, and they're very nice, but I don't think it's necessary. Option three, though, because if you're talking about black water or gray water, your tanks are on the side, and if you're, if you're option three, it's going to be covered. It's not, I'm worried about underneath, it's what's coming out the side.
I would almost, well, I would view the apron as really the entry point. And again, the intent would be to not have that gravel come off, but typically I would say an apron five feet from road to the back of the apron to stop from that gravel. It doesn't necessarily help, and I think we kind of know that, but that's the intent. So really what I'm hearing is almost a mix of three and four, where you have the apron that you're having, it's really a larger pad area that's being concrete here.
Yeah, traditionally, an apron is only to keep you from pulling gravel out onto the paved street. So the only concrete apron we're talking about is a parallel strip to the street as wide as your drive.
Well, on both sides.
Nothing along the side or patio or any of those things that you're talking about.
Well, no.
It's just you would cross a five-to-10-foot concrete threshold, then you'd hit all your gravel.
On both sides of the unit.
Just in the front and you're pulling it in or backing it in.
That's my understanding when you're discussing an apron, that is my understanding.
Well, and we have that around town in some of our older areas where you have that gravel area, but we don't want that gravel coming out on our city street.
I think the option three with delineation of the depth of the apron, expanding it from five to 10 feet, might be a good compromise because that way it gives us the opportunity to provide a little bit more hard surface and a little bit more paving surface, but it allows the affordability of the developer's power to move forward.
You know, Jace, a great example, if you're looking for examples, is there's an RV park called Westview RV Park, located down in Cortez, it's actually between Cortez and Delores, it's probably five miles north of Cortez. It's a great example of what we're talking about, where I think it probably falls pretty close. Now, they do have patios on some of the units, but they're not acquired because some of them don't have it, but they all have a concrete apron, something you might want to take a look at.
I'll take, yeah, absolutely, I'll look into that.
I'm looking at that one right now, so I think it's worth the discussion, just seeing the difference without putting on the big screen, but this has a concrete on the side where you enter and exit your RV, but it's gravel all the way to the street. So we're not talking about that, just so we're clear. We're talking about your entrance from the street would be paved. So the one you're describing has it on the side.
Right.
Getting out of your RV, it's concrete or hard surface.
Right, right, exactly.
We're not, as staff, talking about that, just so we're on this.
I don't like that. I don't support that idea. I like the idea of the option three with delineation of 10-foot.
Okay.
From the street?
From the street.
Yeah, we can have that delineation in there specifically. And one thing, and I think Bill kind of alluded to, is a lot of times the market does dictate this. Sometimes developers, even if it doesn't require it, will put it in specifically because they know that there's a market for it, and they will get more customers for that. And I think that's kind of the thought here, is how restrictive do we want to be with, well, or do we want to leave it more to the market to set? But we can absolutely put in that apron, have 10 feet, and that's the path forward we'll go with. Jerry, do you have any questions? Did you catch most of that?
Yeah, I sure did. It works for me. I appreciate the discussion, Council, and I think you landed on an option that we'll need to articulate it, you know, in language, but we can craft that language given the direction you've given us. That really just leaves us with what about existing parks? And there's two choices for that, and I think probably, Jace, you've got a slide on it.
I don't have a slide on that. It is in the staff report, and basically the question comes up, Jerry, to your point of how we want to treat existing parks from a grandfather's standpoint. If an existing park exists, you know, we see that as a non-conforming use when, and really that exists for most every park here because the streets already are not paved. If they want to do any sort of an expansion, would we look at that, basically, would we look at that as meaning the entirety of the park now has to come into compliance or just the portion of the park that is added on?
I personally think that would be nice, but I think it's a little bit draconian, quite frankly. And I applaud someone who wants to expand a park, but if they've got 100 units or spaces and they want to expand to another 25 or 50 to make them go back and conform the existing 100 is a huge cost, I think, for the developer, and I don't think I would want to support that.
Great.
Sounds like no objection to just limiting the new requirements to expansions of existing parks, correct?
Yes, sir.
New parks and expansions, yep.
Okay. I think that gives us what we need, Jace.
Perfect. Thanks, Jerry.
Yes.
See, I think I have one more slide here. That's the end of the discussion. I know, I think I put 15 minutes on. Code now takes 15 minutes. But that's all the discussion, just as far as moving forward to keep you all in the loop. So we're wrapping up. We're getting very close to finishing this out. We will have a public open house at 5:30, and I'll get that marketing out here this week on November 4th. Monday, November 4th, 5:30, we will have a public open house. And then from that point, we'll have another final work session before we bring it forth for adoption. So long time in the making. We're very excited to be wrapping it up, and we feel very good about it. So thanks for the support and thanks for the guidance.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Good to see you. I'll see you at the next work session.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yep.
5:30 on November 4th?
Yes.
Yep. And like I said, you will see, we just got that finalized, but you'll see a meeting invite coming out within the next couple of days.
Great. Great job. Next item for discussion, 1B, 2024 legislative changes regarding liquor licenses. City Attorney, Mr. Dowsey.
Thank you, Mayor Reed, members of council. In this past legislative session, there were some changes to the liquor code. This came out of an alcohol beverage liquor advisory committee group, or group. Their recommendations, that came out in 2023 is when it came with the group, and then their recommendations were codified in Senate Bill 24 dash, give me one second. Apologies, it's loading. 24 dash 231. Now, a lot of these changes, they're not really applicable to us. It's really, it would be silly for me to really bring them up, such as the ability to sell liquor on Christmas. That's not really going to affect us all that much as a city. But as council is our, essentially the city's liquor board, there is one change that is quite pertinent. This change is the ability to decide if we would like to have public hearings as we currently have them or to not have the public hearings. Since council is, again, the liquor licensing authority here for the city, these applications would still have to be brought before council in a public meeting. It's just whether or not we would like to have a public hearing. So really, the difference is going to be noticing requirements. Right now, if you have a public hearing, the noticing requirements, there has to be a big sign put up at the establishment. I believe it's 15 days, 10 days, my apologies, 10 days prior to the hearing, and that's really just to let the public know that this hearing is going to occur. So it's up to council whether we want to keep the status quo of the public hearing or if we would like to change it to where it's really just another agenda item, since obviously any decisions made before council has to be done in a public meeting. I will say the last liquor server training, I go to those each one. I did have an owner of a business come up to me and let me know his opposition to changing anything. He enjoys seeing the signs, just so if it's a, if it's going to be some sort of competition to him, he would like to be able to come to the meetings to voice his opinion. With that, I will leave it to any questions.
Do the required findings remain the same? What, do you have a hearing or not?
Yes, everything's going to be the same. In my opinion, it really is just changing the noticing requirements. So additionally for the noticing in the newspaper prior to, so it's usually scheduling.
I, go ahead. I kind of like the public hearing. I think it gives the residents within that area an opportunity to speak or give an opinion on it, and I think we're kind of taking that away if we don't have the public hearing.
They'll still have the opportunity to speak, just as any other agenda item. We always open for public comment, so it would just be different in that sense. Mayor Reed doesn't have to beg and gavel if we do change it, but you know, that's.
We like saying.
I know. He's usually angry, so I'm kidding.
The one thing that I've noticed is that over the last five years, we've had, I can recall only two times when we had public comment even on a liquor license, and that was family members speaking in support of the liquor license. So if it would reduce burden on staff by eliminating the public hearing element of it, I'm in favor of that, you know, because it doesn't, we haven't had this huge outpouring of public opposition to any liquor license we've done. So if it comes down to it, if it reduces burden on staff by eliminating the public hearing requirement, I'm in for a favor of that.
My only thought would be that maybe that's the only way some people would know it was happening. Maybe you wouldn't know that your next-door neighbor is applying for a liquor license if you hadn't seen the sign on the front.
Maybe we should ask staff just how big of a burden it is.
Thank you. It's mostly a reminder, remembering to do it 10 days ahead, and with our 14-hour schedule, sometimes it's more days ahead. Sometimes it's putting up that poster, just takes a person or not and put it up. Sometimes it's a challenge when we get the potato growers building. We really didn't want to put it on a facade, so sometimes we have to be creative in how we hang that poster, but it's not hugely burdensome.
We've had no complaints from the public about the hearing process, have we? On the one hand or the other?
Not to my knowledge. You know, I've only been here around three years, so nothing since I've been here, there have been zero complaints as to our current process or procedure. And again, while, yes, they wouldn't have the big sign, it would still be an agendized item because I do have to bring all of the questions before council to hit all statutory requirements, since, again, you're the licensing authority, it does have to go before you all, so.
So to pursue the burden on staff a bit further, do you and Lisa, because it's her department that is primarily responsible, do you guys have a recommendation one way or the other?
I will leave it to Lisa because this will actually not change anything for me as everything will have to go according to how it goes for me regardless.
When there is a hearing, we're required to, from the date we accept the application as complete, we have to wait 30 days, and in that timeframe, we're publishing the legal notice and putting up the poster. So my understanding is we wouldn't, we might be able to expedite things a little bit for people who want a little bit more arbitrary. But I also think that sometimes that 30 days is valuable when we're waiting on items from the applicant, it gives a little more time, or they'll decide to change their premises map or something like that. We have a little bit of discretionary time. I personally like the hearing procedure because, like was already said, there's a poster up, and people tend to notice the poster maybe more than they're noticing the legal notice in the paper. So I think there's some value to the hearing process.
That's good enough for me.
Well, I kind of like to, we may not get a lot of comments or a lot of people coming in, but it does give the option to the public to have a path to be able to see it, to be part of it.
Yeah, if you don't see it as overly burdensome and you feel that it does have value, I don't see any reason to change.
The one question I have is that should we change our mind later on? Is there a timeline, an opt-in, opt-out period for this bit of legislation?
No.
If not, let's continue with the way we're going. If it's not a burden on staff, don't rock the boat.
Yeah, the only change is the statutory language went from a shall to a may. So at any point, we may change our minds and then change our procedures.
I like the fact of how we do it now, just they come up, we hear what they have to say, and I think that for the public, I think that's important. If they're paying attention or interested, then they can't make it down here that they could see it on the city website.
Okay. I think we have direction on that.
I think I do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 1C, proposed fee schedule revisions with 2025. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Every year at about this time, we bring proposed fee schedule revisions to city council with a goal of having the resolution to adopt the next year's fee schedule on the same agenda as the first reading of the budget ordinance. And so this year, it seems like a lot of you look through the red line version, but we really have, I think, fewer proposed changes. We did include a red line version in the meeting packet as well as a summary. I can go quickly through the summary if you'd like. Under land use fees, 311D, a land dedication, land dedication fees in lieu were added for parks of $1,575 per residential unit and schools at $679 per residential unit. And then under 311F, parks and private use of public property, we added just a little, just a couple of words to the events use permit to clarify that the fee is per end date because that wasn't clear the way it was written. And then for the lines, community building, we were charging a separate fee for use of the kitchen, but people didn't always know at the time they made the reservation whether they needed the kitchen, so they were having to come back in and pay that kitchen fee, or people were using without, using the kitchen without paying the fee. So we thought it would be easier for staff and the public if they got five hours for $40, which is not an increase, and everyone can use the kitchen with that $40 fee. And then additional hours are just $5 per hour, which is our current fee. So it's a little bit of street. So it's a little bit of streamlining there. Then under municipal court fees, 311I, court costs were increased to $50 from $25, and the useful public service fee was removed. Right now, juveniles are referred to Hilltop for useful public service, and then we give a list to the defendants of options for useful public service, and they track their own useful public service. Under pavilion fee schedule, 312, we increased the fee for a portable bar with a bartender with $17, we increased that to $20 per hour, and then the fee for additional hours of scheduled event time was increased to $100 per hour. And then fees for water, sewer, and trash, 313, those were increased as was discussed at the budget retreat. Water and sewer connection fees were increased by 5%. Water usage fees per 1,000 gallons were increased by 5% plus a 50 cent passed through from Project 7. Sewer connection and non-residential usage fees were increased by 5%, and trash and recycling fees were increased by 20%. And Mr. Glassell found one thing that we hadn't caught, under 311B, the dog variance application fee, recent ordinance removed that dog variance, so we'll just remove that before we bring this to the meeting on November 5th.
Good catch, Doug.
It's a very good catch.
You're awake.
And I believe all the staff members who propose these changes are here if you have any questions.
And I can add, maybe just on the parks and the school impact fee, so those are in the land use code right now, we're not adding new fees, we are just putting those in our fee schedule, because that's the most appropriate location for them, because we'll be tracking through that language within the code itself, so.
I'm glad you clarified that, because there was some media accounts that this was a new, the imposition of a new fee, so I think we need to be very clear to the public that this is nothing new.
Exactly, yeah, we want to put it in the right location, but absolutely nothing new there.
Thank you.
Okay, being the novice here, on your administrative phase, I don't know what false alarms would be, explain that to me. Is that when I call Chris and say, hey, Chris, I have a problem?
No.
This is, and I initially started at the police department, I kept a spreadsheet way back in the day, so I know when there is, there's a false alarm, and police are dispatched there after like, one or two per month, then there is an actual fee to cover the cost.
So it's false alarms to the PD?
It's kind of like when I go in my office and forget to turn the alarm off, and police show up at the back door.
Oh, that's more automatic then, yes, okay.
Exactly.
Okay, general city council discussion.
Well, I wanted to bring something up on this fee issue, is the fact of mobile home, I mean, mobile food vendor permits. I think they're kind of low, based on the fact that any new restaurant that comes in has all these expenses and stuff, and I think that we're allowing competition around town that draws customers away from the businesses that are establishing themselves and promoting themselves, and I think that the $20 a month is just kind of cheap to park your mobile home, I mean, your mobile truck on city property and be competitive against the ones that have in-house seating, and now they're putting tents up and tables out there, it's no longer a drive-up and get it, it's a drive-up, sit down, enjoy your lunch, and I just feel that it's unfair competition for the existing businesses. Even a minimal raised fee would be acceptable, I'm not saying $100 a month or whatever, but...
I would disagree with you that it's competition, unfair competition with existing restaurants, because when I go out, if I'm going to go out and go a food truck, I'm going to intentionally go to a food truck. If I'm going to go out for lunch generally, I'm going to go outside and I'm going to buy a restaurant. I do agree with the fact that they are kind of expanding their footprint, it's no longer just park a food truck, people walk up, they are putting out big tables, they're putting out their little pop-up tents, they're putting up more of a semi-permanent structures for their drive-up food trucks, which I do agree with, I think that that's a valid point.
We had, I take it, we have no regulations specifically governing that a food truck is a food truck, but it's not a food truck, it's 12 tables and four tents or anything like that?
Well, if it's on private property.
Right.
This is a relatively new, well, everything, I've been here long enough, it seems like yesterday, but we haven't had this fee very long, and I don't disagree that it's very cheap, it's very inexpensive, although I did have a food truck scream at staff and throw a huge fit, and I had to intervene to break up the fight, because $50 a year was going to put them out of business. So there's always that side of things, no matter what the fee is, some of them feel like it is very burdensome, so we purposely tried to keep it very inexpensive, just enough that we made sure people got licensed, because if they're no skin in the game, it's really hard to track them, but if they have paid something, and it does cover a little bit of the clerk's cost of administering the program. But I agree, it is a small fee.
Maybe a $5 increase or something like that, something like that might even pacify me, you know, I just think that there has to be something to, well, there are a few trucks that are actually on private property that are pretty much established as a restaurant, and to just, again, it just doesn't seem fair that a block away is another restaurant, and you see people parked on the street, sitting underneath this cover, enjoying their lunch, and they're paying $20 a month for a fee, and then, I don't know what a regular restaurant is charged, but I'm sure just their overhead would almost, wouldn't even come close to matching that.
It's probably, at least in my opinion, probably a deeper, more philosophical discussion that we should have, but maybe not when it comes to just setting the fee, but I think it's fine if you would like to have that philosophical discussion sometime, we could certainly do that. I would say that it's, you know, food trucks are kind of a sign of the times, if you go to other communities, you see them everywhere, so it's not something that Montrose is uniquely doing or allowing, but if you'd like to have further discussion on it, we can certainly do that.
City Durango has a whole different vision of that, they actually view the food trucks as a stimulant for the existing restaurants. Because when they come downtown, they can't get into the restaurant, rather than taking their tax dollars home and putting it back in their pocket, they'll go to one of the other facilities and other establishments in town. So they view it as, not as a competition, unfair competition by any means, but they view it as a great synthesis between the two.
That scenario actually happened in Durango, downtown Colorado.
Yes, that was a great example of what they're talking about, about that the food trucks are now considered a stimulant for the existing restaurants.
But I agree with you, David, if we're going to talk about this, I think we need to have it in a setting, or as an advertiser that we're doing it, so we can get comments from the community how they feel about it too.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, but I would also, I kind of agree with what Ed is saying, from a competition standpoint, not only do these food trucks get by with a fairly inexpensive rate, but I would look at the fact that they do create trash and other situations that the city's going to have to deal with. So I think that there's more than just that one competition, there's some excess cost that they're skipping, and maybe utilizing their own trash at home or disposal other than what we would be charging. We should also get into, we're requiring grease straps for restaurants, if I cook in one of these trucks, we're muddling the grease. So I think maybe we need to look at a broad spectrum of what the overall effect is on the community.
Well, I think we could certainly have a broader discussion, I think Judy, if we're going to do that, we need to advertise that we're going to discuss it, and so if you guys would like to have this as a subject for discussion at a future work session, let us know, we want to give staff enough time to perhaps do some analysis of what other communities are doing in this regard, if anything.
I agree with that, I just think that also I'd like to, it gives staff time to reach out to some of our local food trucks and our local hard-escape restaurants, and get a little feedback from them as well, that we include them in discussion, since it'd be a work session, they can't really comment, but if we have an opportunity for staff to maybe reach out to some of the local businesses and get their feedback on that before we make it up for discussion.
Can I throw out an option? As a compromise, could we move forward with the fee schedule? Because we're toward the end of the year, and then it's our next year, and then a better time to read up and do that, because we just did that here last year with the food truck cluster, met with all of them, would be after the holidays, because they're ramp, they're not going to, they're just not going to come.
I think we were suggesting having a public fee schedule.
Sure, I'm just throwing that out to everybody, if we could do that, and then we're committed in the spring to gathering the food trucks and getting input from restaurants, and we can put it on as a full discussion either here or at DART, that's where we traditionally had those discussions, it was internal and then at DART. I think having that discussion, now that we've had more food trucks in our community, probably be good anyway, because years ago when we established some of this, we only had a couple of them, and now we have more and more, so.
I think, I'd say it's however staff feels most appropriate to set it up, and maybe DART is the better venue than before council.
And if it rises through DART to a work session item because of the interest in it, then that's great.
Sure, yeah, we'd have to come here for any change to fees, or any rules, regulations, those kinds of things.
But I agree, I think a fee schedule adjustment as it sits is fine, but the idea later on, having a more elaborate discussion on the fee schedule as relating to food trucks based on our evolving burden on our systems.
Does that address your question and your issue?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, I've had a conversation with a couple of restaurant owners, and they were yes and no kind of deal, yes, they felt it was unfair competition, to do anything about it wasn't a big deal for them. So I just felt that maybe, kind of like the short-term rentals, that it might be something that we should look at, perhaps, I know that the potato growers, they're going to move several of those food trucks into the back of that, and then...
Let's save that for when we talk about all this.
Okay, but that was part of the reason why I brought it up, you know, what are we going to do about these things in the future?
We will definitely discuss it. Next, general city council discussion, any other council discussion?
I just wanted to bring up one quick point, we had a, one of our local citizens that's involved in the party tent business that mentioned that he'd like to see us allow staking and large 20 by 30 style tents, and I just wanted to mention that we have, we already mentioned that, and we explained, Chris and I were at lunch, and we explained the reason why we do what we do, and the damage to our parks and the damage to our water lines, and that's why we do not allow people to stake tents down in our parks for public events, and just wanted to kind of mention that we did have that conversation, so that you're aware that it happened.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point, we can also pass along the fact that several of them are smart enough to bring empty, large containers, fill them with water and type of thing to it, so really, there is an easier way to do it, and it's reusable without damage.
Judy, in? The only thing that I would add under general council discussion is I attended my first CML policy committee meeting this past Friday, I attended virtually, from 9 to noon on Friday, interesting meeting, a lot of interesting input, we're sending our recommendations to the executive board for potential legislation, I think probably what you're going to see more of, from CML's perspective this year, is more what I would call enabling legislation as opposed to specific legislation, but allowing municipalities, enabling municipalities to create certain laws or ordinances that heretofore have not had the authority to do. And it was interesting in the discussion, several members of the policy committee thinking that CML was supporting or endorsing these changes in the law, such as taxes on vacant homes, that type of thing, and it was difficult to get across to a number of the members of the committee, no, CML was not endorsing that, they were endorsing the legislation that would enable a municipality to adopt those kinds of ordinances, so I think that's a, yep, so I think that was probably the biggest takeaway for me, was to see that the support for enabling legislation, which actually broadens the powers of municipalities as opposed to restricting some. So be your executive level and get it done.
We got your back.
No other council discussion, staff comments? Yes, sir?
Just wanted to thank you guys for your support, we attended Taylor Tent Training yesterday, and options to keep up on the technology, if possible, if you guys approve us versus saving materials, but we also say that we have less than three options, we really appreciate it, so thank you for that, technology.
Thank you, Tim, we think it's really important that our PD maintains state-of-the-art equipment, as well as state-of-the-art employees, so thanks. Other?
I will make...
You missed your opportunity.
I know, I just suddenly, it came up because of Tim. It was really interesting to see in the Daily Press that, at forum last week, when we had all the candidates come and speak, that Dennis Anderson declared that the winner of the forum with all those speakers, the winner was Blaine Hall and the city of Montrose. Very positive time, praising Montrose, Montrose PD, and the city of Montrose.
Very good, thanks for mentioning it. Bill, you don't have anything?
I have one.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned, thank you.